It is now 7:00 PM, Town Council Meeting in Town Council Chambers. Ed, will you lead us in prayer?
Welcome.
Hello.
Please watch over this great state of Rhode Island and always in particularly watch over the great citizens of West Warwick. And we ask that you please help guide this council in making wise decisions, informed decisions, and always with a little bit of compassion. Amen.
Amen.
Angelo, do you want to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Tucker?
Here.
Councilman Cunningham?
Here.
Councilman Padula?
Here.
Council Vice President Drew?
Here.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
There is a forum. Minutes of the previous meeting resolved that the minutes of the March 1st, 2016 Town Council Meeting are hereby accepted.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Consent agenda resolved, license applications resolved that the consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
I move the resolution.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Now, last year we had talked about bonding for private detectives. I didn't see any issues with anyone on the list this year. Is that correct?
I looked at it, yeah. As far as I can see, they're all on there.
As far as I can see.
Because half of them didn't have bonds.
Right.
Yep. Any other discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Those licenses that were approved were Class F liquor license for St. Anthony Church, Weekly Club Raffle for St. Peter Paul Church, business license for Flower by Kiku, professional novelty Patricia Bollino, and all private detective licenses and all kennel license renewals have been approved.
Presentation, Jim Wilkinson from Markham to present the FY15 audited financial statements.
He's actually running late, so he should be here shortly.
All right, we'll skip that one.
We're over.
Town Council acting as a liquor commission, new Class T theater liquor license, resolved that the following application for a Class T Theater liquor license, having advertised in accordance with law for hearing on this date, no remonstrance or objections, objectors present, the same is hereby approved, The Arctic Playhouse Incorporated DBA, The Arctic Playhouse, 117 Washington Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island, 02893.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moved in second. The reason why this is on the agenda, I know it was on the agenda a few weeks ago, as we approved the wrong liquor license, because the liquor license was, as they were, a restaurant or serving food, and that's not what they're doing, just their beer and wine, so that's why it's a Class T liquor license.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Town Council acting as Town Council, Ordinance Number 2015-17, sponsored, second reading sponsored by Council Vice President Drew, as amended in Ordinance Amendment Chapter 8, Garbage and Trash, Article 7, Rules and Regulations for Collection and Disposal of Rubbish of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of West Warwick.
I'll move the ordinance.
Didn't you just miss one?
No.
Second.
Moved in second.
We're on J.
Okay.
We're on J.
This is our second reading. David, you out there? David here?
I don't see him.
No? Okay. Good question. I made these up, guys, because the Menom Hosen was going to send out a letter and just reference this ordinance in the letter, and, you know, we didn't want to add any more expense to it. The original ordinance is probably like four or five pages long, but as you can see, it fits pretty well in a little trifold.
Absolutely.
Right? And this trifold, I think it has all the information that we need, you know, in the back it has all the telephone numbers that you need, and I was hoping we could mail this out. I asked them to hold off on mailing until we finalize the ordinance, and then we could send these out with it, so they can actually see what the ordinance is as we amend it or pass it. And also maybe leave these at the desk all around Town Hall, so people could look at it and get a good idea or get the idea of what the ordinance is all about. This is a draft, so, and the manager has the publisher file that this was created on, so they can change it. I've gone over it pretty well. I don't think there's any typos, but I'll let your people proof it. This is, basically, this is cut and paste anyway, right off the electronic file that you gave me. So if it's bad here, it's bad in the file. But there's just one thing that I question on here after printing it out, and that's the section, let's see here, 8105, five, no, where is it?
The one where you have to bring it to Coventry.
The one you have to go to Coventry, yeah.
It's right on the middle over here. I know, I can't see it either.
Okay, yeah, section 8105, item 7, where it basically mandates where you have to drop off this type of equipment, circuit boards, VCRs. So it says here that it must be brought to the Rhode Island Transfer Station located at Coventry DPW. There are several Rhode Island Transfer Stations, so my question is, is that...
Yeah, Coventry was designated as West Warwick's drop-off location.
Okay, so if somebody took this stuff to Providence's transfer station, would they accept it?
I don't believe they're supposed to. Would they? I don't know. I think, because I think, just like if you go to any existing transfer station, you have to have a proof of residency. So I think Coventry was designated as Coventry, West Warwick, Situate, and a few other towns as their drop-off location. So I think technically, you're supposed to have proof of residency if you drop anything off a transfer station by the state law. So I think that's why they called that one out. Now, if you brought electronics to the Providence one, are they going to tell you to go away? Probably not, but I think they're supposed to go to the one that's designated.
We can't tell the people where to go if they want to go to Providence.
Well, that's the only thing. I mean, this is an ordinance, so, I mean, we're ordering them that they have to go to Coventry. That's fine.
I'm pretty sure we have to by state law.
You're not ordering, because if they happen to take it to...
It says must be brought to.
But if they take it someplace else and they don't accept it, you're basically telling them, basically by state law, you have to go to Coventry.
They will accept it because of your residency in West Warwick.
So you're saying it is state law that they have to...
That is my understanding.
Oh, okay. If that's the case, I don't see anything else that one needs to be changed.
I just said one thing with the offense very back.
Turn your mic around.
The very last section there where it says first offensive warning, maybe something clarifying, clarifying language above that, you know, failure to comply with these rules will result in blah, 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 because it really doesn't say it, just...
Yeah, second offense, fine, and then the third offense is suspension.
Well, no, D does. Look at D. One, two, and three is part of D.
Oh, it just bolder.
Okay. All right, then that's fine.
You have to read all together. Don't just pick out a section. Read it.
Maybe, maybe you might want to take the space out, so it looks like it belongs to that.
It's part of it, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. I like it.
I think we should do a few more of these on certain ordinances that the people may not be aware of, or landlords may not be aware of, whatever.
You can always include it with the tax bill, Ed. It's not going to cost us a...
The tax bill, the tax bill's the wrong idea.
Why?
I don't get it. I don't see my tax bill. Anybody who has a mortgage doesn't see their tax bill.
Well, no, if you're using escrow, you see them.
I don't, but I'll never get any, I personally, I know a lot of people who will not see this in their tax bill.
What about sewer and automotive?
So how many go...
Unless you put it in automotive, yeah, or sewer.
Yeah.
A lot of people don't have cars either in their names.
Our initial intent was to send it to all of the landlords in town, especially, because those are the areas that we're having the most issue with. And we have all those addresses from, you know, past mailings that we've done.
So when you say landlord, you mean multifamily?
Correct.
Okay. Whether their owner occupied or not.
Correct. A lot of them are not in town, so our goal is to try to get the word out, because ultimately they're going to be responsible for their tenants.
We could do something with the next sewer commission meeting, too. Put it in the sewer bills, too.
But Dave, let me ask you, I do understand you never get it, but then if we went along with that, then why even bother putting, like, there's usually an explanation letter in there from the mayor or from the town manager. I know all towns do it.
We haven't done that in the past few years.
Yeah. So maybe the question is, John, how many are we reaching if we did it that way? You know, if there's, you know, 8,000 households or whatever, and we're reaching, say, 6,000 of them with this, then maybe it's worth it, even if...
Yeah, there's got to be...
It's worth it regardless, because it's not costing anyone any money.
Yeah.
It's going, so we're going to, at least we're going to fill half the bushel.
That's what I'm thinking.
And then, and then, you know, Town Hall, whether it comes in here or whatever, you can have them pamphlets to pick up, or, I mean, you know, they're eventually all going to get it.
All right, well, we can talk about that later on.
We can separate the ones out that go to the mortgage companies, that's easy. So we won't send them to those, obviously, that go directly to mortgage companies, and everyone else. If it goes to an address, we'll make sure they have a copy.
So if you could separate them out, so there's no one correspondent from the town that would go to every household?
You'd have to send a separate letter to...
Yeah, could you scrub it against those people, the list that you're saying where the homeowner has, is going to get it, scrub it against, like, the automotive list to get a better percentage like that?
Again, we could talk about it, but I think, once you...
But not everybody has a car either, so, yeah.
Plus, we have a lot of addresses on the motor vehicle.
So once it's finalized, then, put it on the front page of the web?
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, this is good.
I think this is a big step forward with this.
Any other discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Brian?
Yes.
Angelo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
When the auditor has arrived, if you'd like to, whenever you'd like.
Let's bump right through this, and then we can get right to that, because this looks like it's going to go pretty quick.
Ordinance Number 2016-1, second reading sponsored by Council President Goslin, proposed ordinance shall allow the appointed municipal court judge to select a specific member of his or her law firm to act as an assistant municipal court judge.
I'll move the ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second. Just a quick discussion. We've talked about it, John Bernero, Judge Bernero came to us, although he's never missed a court day, a court session. He said if he happens to get sick or anything like that, that we'd have to send everybody home. There's nobody to back him up, so he asked if he could have somebody from his law firm do this, and this is what generated this ordinance. So it's just to cover, and that doesn't just cover for him. If he decides he's retiring or we don't reappoint him, it'll be good for whoever comes in afterwards also.
Any other discussion?
Did we take something out? Yeah, number two, candidate must be a member of the municipal court judge's law firm. Why? Why can't it be someone that may, say, for instance, if...
Because you're letting him appoint them.
Well, no, I know that, but why tie his hand? Say if he wants somebody else from another law firm.
It's an issue of continuity, because if everything's within the whole law firm, that guy's going to have better...
There's no money or nothing, it's just...
He's exchanging hands, so it's almost the same to an associate. You have to cover that, that you're allowing him to do that.
And if he goes to a different law firm, that law firm may want to get paid, where if they have their law firm doing it, then...
They can't get paid, so he wouldn't appoint them, because there's no money attached to this.
But that alleviates that issue.
How many lawyers do you know are going to do this for free?
I don't know. They got one.
He got one. But it's only if his law firm is...
The council pool.
I see.
I, you know, I mean, I don't know, because if, if he doesn't appoint someone that we like, and he goes against our wishes, you fire him. I mean, so, we still got control.
You've got control over the entire situation. All you're allowing him to do is, for example, if he's on vacation and there's a heavy calendar that can't be continued or kicked over, you're allowing him to select a social visitor off as the governor.
Oh, no, this is great. Yeah, no, this is great, but since he's getting ready to retire, we know that, and we might want him to appoint somebody or recommend that he...
We'll reappoint another person.
This appointment ends, the appointment of the associate ends when the judge's position is done. So if John decided to retire tomorrow, he would lose the ability to do this.
He can't, he can't, if John, if John says he's not looking to...
He's not selecting a successor.
But Ed, Ed, if John, if John...
I told you how you allow it. If he don't listen, take the council's advice.
It's not even that, guys. If John decides he's not going to want to be reappointed, or if we decide we don't want to reappoint him, this person also goes with him. It doesn't, he doesn't stay on as judge. We reappoint another judge.
What I'm saying is, and I'm thinking of a scenario, David, where possibly there might be another law firm that we're thinking of to take over, so this could be a transition period where for a few weeks, this new attorney could, that's for another law firm, could sit in for him to run the roads.
But we're not going to, but we're not going to assign an assistant, you'll be filling a municipal.
But what you're saying is you can do that anyway without this ordinance.
We have the power in it.
If John decided to retire as of next week, and you didn't, if you wanted to put it out to bid, or you wanted to choose someone, and let's say two of the guys had someone in mind, two of the guys had somebody else in mind, you could bring them in, basically give them a run-through and then decide who you wanted to pick, but that's still your power and your authority. You're not observing that at all by giving John the ability just to pick someone to replace him. So that person's going to be acting in his shoes only for as long as he has the shoes to run.
And again, it's also, it's only, how many years has he been doing this?
Nineteen.
And he hasn't missed a court session.
Nineteen years.
He's just, he's just saying, if he happens to get sick or goes on vacation, which he hasn't, he's scheduled, he has scheduled his vacations around court sessions and everything else, but if he happens to get sick, gets a cold or whatever, he don't want to push the people out to the street who've taken time out of work.
There's going to be 100 people out here waiting, no courts.
Everybody saw what it was last week. It was, you know, you're sending them, you're sending them home. All right.
Any other discussion? Any public discussion? Roll call? Angelo?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Ordinance Number 2016-2, first reading sponsored by Council President Goslin, and ordinance amending Article 5 of the West Warwick Pension Plan, including police and fire.
I'll move the ordinance.
Second.
Discussion. Fred, you just want to give the brief...
Yeah, quick background, just so you know, you'll be getting the completely updated pension plan document that incorporates all the changes that were made over the negotiations in the coming weeks here, but in the meantime, an issue's come up where we found an error in the existing one, which was basically that there's certain elements of state law that's required to be as part of our pension plan document, and some words were changed when they made it into our document that make, it was just a mistake, but it makes a huge difference. Krista, the Pension Board Attorney, and also Lou Aston, who's the new Pension Board Chairman, are both here. Krista could probably explain it to you better than I can, but, but it's, basically, we're just fixing it now to correct the error, so that we don't deal with any issues, and it has to do with people that are out on work-related injuries or workers' compensation, and how that time that's away is dealt with once they retire, so. If you have any questions for Krista, she's here to answer them now, so.
Basically, it's a scriveness error. There was a word computed, and it should have been commuted. So it's a big difference.
Computed, commuting.
Those two things mean very significantly.
When you commute a case, the workers' comp, you're basically settling it. There's a big difference between a computed payment versus a commuted payment.
Oh, yeah.
So I think, if there's anything else you want to add, but that's basically it.
Basically changing one word, fixing a significant...
It doesn't change anybody's benefits, it doesn't change...
Krista, if you want to just come up to the mic and...
There's no substantive issues, it's just really scriveness.
Yeah, for the computed versus commuted, the other thing that the Pension Board did recommend is specifying how the set aside, the offset, I'm sorry, is stated in the statute. In the current statute, it just says any amounts paid or payable under the provisions of any workers' compensation law, and then it keeps going on. The recommendation would be to include language that says exclusive of Medicare set-aside allocations, specific compensation benefits, attorney's fees, or any benefits authorized by the terms of a collective bargaining agreement. That is consistent with the way that the state statute reads as well, and those are things that have been changed at the state level, but while we were recommending the typo change, we, the Pension Board also recommended that those be included, so that the offset can be calculated that way.
Any other discussion? Any public discussion? And again, this is the first reading, so if you have any questions, you can come back to the next meeting. Hearing none, all, roll call? Angelo?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Appointment of town solicitor, resolved in accordance with the provisions of the West Warwick Home Rule Charter, Article 11, the Town Council hereby appoints Timothy A. Williamson, DBA, the firm of Timothy A. Williamson Law Offices, 600 Tolgate Road, West Warwick, Rhode Island. For the resolve, the Town Council President is authorized to sign any related scope of services agreement by and between the Town of West Warwick and Timothy A. Williamson, DBA, the firm of Timothy A. Williamson Law Offices.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Timmy, you could have got an office right here on Main Street in West Warwick, you know. That's what I said.
I got Rick Malley and checking it out for me, you can get back to me. You went in with the gun, you couldn't get the deal. I had to go to Warwick, I'm sorry. I had to return to the big city. This is just a, there was an error the last time we, the resolution actually says tall law, which is my license plate, so we just made this legit for prosperity, but other than that.
Do you want to explain a little further?
Well, dear, my prosperity, and...
Presterity or prosperity?
All right, prestane. Any other discussion?
He said it right the first time. He said it right the first time. That's the lawyer of knowledge.
It's not austerity.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Additions and cancellation of taxes, resolved that the attached additions in the amount of $6,975.08 and cancellations in the amount of $16,478.41 presented to the Tax Assessor for approval of the Town Council in ordinance, in accordance with Article 25, Section 5 of the West Warwick Code of Ordinances, is hereby approved. Original list is on file in the Office of the Tax Assessor.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
National Grid, resolved that the Town Council hereby approves the National Grid proposing, that National Grid proposing a new South Pole location on Main Street.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
What's this? What is this? A pole they're going to remove? Did they move the other ones around town, Dave?
Actually, they did remove a lot of them. The ones that have not been removed, they need some aerial construction by utility companies, in other words, they have to redesign their plant or extend their plant, because it's too far away, so they just can't pull it over. But they've cleaned up North Pleasant Street, which was last meeting, actually the day of the meeting, and there's just a couple more in my area that I brought up to Fred, and I'll tell you, Joe Argenti, he CCs me on every email, and he's, he's on every, he has a connection with Cox Communications and National Grid. He's just, you know, he has a tough time sometimes with Verizon, and, but he now has a good contact point there who's been very responsive.
That's all, because I'll tighten them up.
Again, this is, this is National Grid's pole, not Verizon's pole.
Well, there's a few.
Yeah, there's a few. It looks like there's a lot of activity down there.
All right, I have no problem then, if they're doing what they're supposed to do.
Any other discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Why don't we go back to letter I? I mean, H.
H? Jim Wilkinson from Markham to present the FY15 audited financial statement.
I would have had the rule before. Good evening. Thanks for inviting me. Before I started, I know we did prepare a short outline for a couple of discussion points. I want to thank management of the town and the school department for all the cooperation and for their readiness for the audit process. And one of the items we'll talk about here is a change in the pension accounting. I know we tortured them more than usual this year because of this change, so we appreciate their, their help, cooperation, patience, and all their efforts. And you received a copy of the financial statements. Our opinion on those financial statements is unmodified, which is a clean opinion, this is the second year in a row. Our opinion states that the financial statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles applicable to governments. As I mentioned, the town did adopt provisions of the new pension reporting standards, GASB 67 and 68 this year. That really, that change really is, results from a movement of, instead of focusing on the expenditures and the contributions of the pension plan, it really focuses now on measuring the pension obligation and the net assets that have been set aside for pensions. So under the old rules, as long as you were making your pension contributions, you never showed a liability in your financial statements. This year, with the, with the reporting changes, the beginning net assets of the town were restated to reflect 100, almost $155 million of net pension liabilities, and those are pension commitments in excess of the assets that have been set aside. Certainly a significant change to the financial statements. About $119 million of that liability is attributable to the town's pension plan, and just a little better than $35 million is related to the school, the teachers' plan, participation with the state teachers' retirement system. On the town's plan, the funded status of the town's plan increased from 19.3% to 19.6% for the year. The big item to really note in that is that the town planned, increased its funding of the plan up from just above $5.2 million in fiscal '14 to in excess of $8 million this year. Significant contribution, significant transfer of resources from the general fund to the pension plan, which over the long term should go to, again, amortize that liability down and ensure the solvency of the pension fund. The contributions to the state's plan have always been consistently funded at 100%, of the required contribution. There are significant new note disclosures in the financial statements related to this, so if you have trouble sleeping some night, I suggest you pull out a copy of the financials and flip to note 11, and within five minutes, I'm sure we're going to be sound asleep. and flip to Note 11 and within five minutes, I'm sure we're gonna be sound asleep. Little accounting humor there. John didn't even laugh, so yeah, sorry about that. And some of the highlights of the individual funds. The general fund ended the year with a fund balance of $2,706 at year end. There was a current year decrease of $954,000 for the year. Looking at budget variances, primarily that's attributable to tax revenue coming in below what was anticipated. Certainly largely out of the town's control. No other significant budget variance has really contributed to that. The school fund ended the year with a fund balance just under $3.2 million, $3,183. They actually increased their fund balance during the year $474,000. A good solid year for them. The wastewater fund operated at essentially break even, as it's designed, increasing net assets of just over $107,000. It timely repaid the scheduled debt that was scheduled to be repaid during the fiscal year. No real items to note there. Going back to the pension fund. The pension fund assets set aside in the pension fund at the end of the year were just over $29 million, $29021. There was a current year increase in those net assets of just over $1 million. So certainly the money that you contributed, that increase contributed to this as well. I think we're seeing a lot of plans end of the year with returns on investments a little bit below what was anticipated. But again, over time, that should come back and get reflected.
In previous years, we were initially in a negative on that, correct?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
By far?
How much did we contribute last year?
Five million. Five million, fourteen.
Little over $8 million and fifteen.
Yeah, fourteen was...
Just a little over five the previous year.
In three years' time, we went from two to five to eight.
And again, that's in accordance with the funding improvement plan that the state required. So we are being consistent with that plan.
Actually, I'm sorry, 1.5 to 5 to 8. Because the $500,000 was cut to go towards the station fire years ago. And we cut from $2 million a year down to 1.5. So we've increased drastically on that.
No, I think we've done a great job increasing. My question is, so I'm reading your writing. Number six, pension fund, ended year with net assets of $29 million.
Correct.
Current year increase, $1 million. We gave $8 million last year. So does that mean it's a net loss of $7 million?
Yeah, there were benefits paid. The fund financial statement for that is...
So we're still going backwards?
No, we're still going up.
No, it went up.
No, the funded...
No, we're up. Okay, okay. So...
We were draining it before we actually bring it up ahead.
Right, so without me going to find the page where it is then?
It's only maintaining.
On page twenty... On page twenty-three. The expenditures paid, there were $9 million of benefits paid. So if you'd only contributed $5 million, that would've been a... Two or three million dollar loss.
For years, we were contributing $2 million and paying out $5 million.
Right. That fund was on a slope. Now it's...
Instead of being three or four million in the hole, we're a million off. That's almost a $4 million turnaround. And now it's actually higher.
Exactly.
That's why I want to make sure that that's stated.
It was projected to run out of money by 2017.
Okay. Well, not out of the woods, but...
Oh, no, certainly not out of the woods.
But this is a good report.
Oh, absolutely.
I just wanted to make that quick.
No, we were funded in 2013.
We were funded in 2013, only at 16%, correct? Right in that neighborhood? Okay, we're at 19 and change?
Just under 20 now.
Not insignificant.
Going in the right direction.
Yeah, we are, absolutely.
Let's see, one other item to note on the other post-employment benefits, which is retiree health benefits. The town actually established a trust fund this year to at least start pre-funding some of those benefits. Another proactive move. Just over $239,000 was contributed to the trust during the year. The accumulated liability for that pension, that plan is about $58 million today. Certainly continued funding of that on an incremental basis over the long term is prudent.
John, we have this on the website?
The highlights, not yet. I just got the highlights.
The whole book. It's a PDF?
Yes, it is. It was posted to the website the day it was issued to the...
Yeah, because we've already gotten a hot copy. I think we already, all of us, received a hot copy.
I sent the PDF.
Yeah, I didn't get a hot copy.
Similar to the pension changes that were implemented this year, in three years, the other post-employment benefits will be the same way. So there'll be more liabilities put on the books of the town's financial statements. Certainly, they're all disclosed, but... We can actually make the entries. It shows some pretty big numbers. And certainly, the pension liabilities and the OPEB liabilities are the largest liabilities that the town has. Exceeds bonded debt and...
Great. Very good. Any questions? Not perfect, but headed in the right direction. Oh, yeah. It was projected too, isn't it, really? Better than projected, yeah. If you have any questions, just reach out to John. I'm sure he'll have questions.
Sure, I'm... Absolutely. Probably has most of them, so...
Public questions or comments? Any questions from anybody on the council? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Discussion action. FY17 budget workshops and public hearing schedules. I handed out updated public hearing schedules. I mean, budget workshop schedules.
Good evening. We actually, at the last meeting, we set the dates for the public workshops or for the department workshops, budget workshops, and the public hearings. Now, what we have, what we have in front of you is the list of the departments that will go on each day. We basically followed what we had the previous year, but we wanted some input from the council if there's anything different or any department you'd rather see on one day versus another. So what you have in front of you is basically the document as it is right now. If there are any changes, please let me know, let Marion know, either tonight or as you can take a look at them, so that we can actually get this posted on Friday for Tuesday's meeting.
I remember last year went pretty smoothly, the two days. So like, I know we put some thought into how we were structuring the departments, so I'm fine with leaving it the way it is. If this is the way it was last year.
I don't have a problem with here either.
Do we want to take some easier ones, like street lighting and housing board, and move it over to 22nd because the 29th looks pretty... Between the school department, senior center, finance, tax, but those are some pretty decent amount of time.
Yeah, but you have police and fire also on that agenda that day. That's gonna be long too.
That's what I'm saying. If we take one of them, one of the major departments, and then take like the housing board, street lighting, town sergeant, that budget's out of control over there.
What is it up to, $500,000 a year?
No, seven.
And move it over to 22nd, we can really focus on the 29th.
You better have your paperwork with you that day, Bert.
So housing?
Yeah, just take the easier ones and slide them over.
Sure. How many would you like to move? Four, five?
Them are two minutes apiece. It doesn't matter. I mean, it's not a...
You're saying those are insignificant, but then when you get into...
Well, no, not insignificant, but I mean, as far as time allowed it for.
Yeah, yeah. Two minutes apiece.
So whether we move them over or we... It's two minutes, one side, one side.
I really don't care. No matter.
Yeah, whatever you want to do. All right, you guys will be here until 11 o'clock. We'll order pizza on the 29th.
Is that in Bert's budget? Is that in Bert's budget? Pizza?
Pizza's in Bert's budget.
All right.
All right, just keep it the way it is.
Okay. And what also was presented was the dates and times for the public hearings, which, again, that has to be published. So we wanted to make sure that those dates were still good for everyone.
As long as there's nothing earth-shattering in these two dates, those dates should work.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
Okay, thank you.
Veterans Coordinator sponsored by Councilman Perdula.
We all got an email from the veterans post over here and they endorsed Deb. I guess she had a couple of meetings with them and he wanted to clarify. He called me himself. He wanted to clarify a few things. And Deb, I don't know if you want to add to what you discussed with Bob.
Just to clarify, the email I read was they endorsed the position.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. They endorsed Deborah Schusterman. Yeah.
Maybe I read it wrong.
Read it right next time.
Okay. I will clarify. We do have to advertise this position.
Yeah.
It has to be advertised three times.
Deb, you can explain what went on.
You have to create it first.
I'd like to hear myself.
We have to create it also.
Here we go. Deb Schusterman, 43 Governors Hill, West Warwick. So I had a meeting with Bob Shear Schmidt. Okay, last night at the American Legion. And his little piece on the email to you folks at the council was just a small piece of what I had submitted, what the position was gonna... And we agreed on a lot of things, that there needs to be outreach, which they're not doing. And the position of the veteran coordinator will be greatly appreciated within this town. So we'll work in concert with the council, the Veterans Council, so... We'll not work for the council, but we'll work in concert. We'll be a member of the council, a member of the American Legion. Also, to reinstate the Disabled American Veterans chapter here in West Warwick, which I understand disbanded here about six months ago. So I'm doing research for that as well to go ahead and get that back on track.
Deb, how many members are there on the Veterans Council? I don't know if the top...
I think he said eight. I think he said eight. I think it's from American Legion and vets and another advocate group that's there, so...
Okay, thank you. I was just curious.
What I noticed was there's no outreach to the veterans. And it was very obvious during the St. Patrick's Day parade this past weekend, where there were five veterans marching, which is kind of unsat. So we talked about how to outreach to veterans in the town. So I think we'll work, I think the position itself will work well with the Veterans Council.
Yeah, and again, Deb, I thank you for bringing this to my attention. And then when I spoke, and my father included, they had no voice. And I would really, no matter who gets appointed, I want them to work with the veterans. And I know that whoever puts their name in is gonna have to get together with Bob and company and make sure that it makes a perfect match because this is a very important appointment that I think to represent our veterans, our disabled veterans, and whoever else is involved. And I thank you for coming forward with this first and foremost.
I saw a need and I figured, let me go ahead and let's start instituting the process.
Nobody has ever approached me.
All right, so... And I appreciate your support. I really do. I appreciate all the council's support on this.
So Deb, I see the list over here, the municipality. So Coventry doesn't have one?
They don't, so...
Cranston doesn't have one?
They don't. But what Cranston does have is they have their representative, their state representative, who has his own committee, who works well with the VFW. And so Warwick has a very large contingency. And so everything, everybody kind of works together with the representatives up in the State House.
I'm sure that Warwick and Providence and Covlin and all them were saying, well, West Warwick don't have one. But they jumped the gun and they did it. They pulled the trigger.
No, the state just, the governor just appointed a state...
They just appointed the director of the state's Veterans Affairs. And he'll, I think he starts on 1 May, because his official retirement date from the Navy is April 30th.
So as the state coordinator, I would expect our veterans advisor, our veterans affair person to definitely coordinate with the state.
Yes, and that's, it's in there. Part of the responsibilities is to go ahead and report to and attend all the state veteran fair, the director of veterans affairs meetings. Also, there's the tag, the adjutant general. He has a leadership summit for all veterans coordinators. So there's a lot of other committees up on the State House that I do attend anyway. But the position itself will bring back all legislature, legislation that deals with veterans affairs to the town and to the town's veterans, and vice versa. So I've been helping write legislation for veterans for the state up at the State House, so... So it's just, like I said, it doesn't have to be me. I just want to ensure that the veterans of this town are taken care of and they're well-informed.
Well, I think, I mean, the first step is, I mean, actually, you've done the first step. You need to create the position, set up the parameters, how long the term is, et cetera, et cetera.
There's enough information in that email to go ahead and write that position, so...
You're a great candidate, obviously. But I mean, I know you already know, we still have to...
Yes.
Open it up for whoever may be interested.
And I fully expect that and I accept that, so...
I'll just mention, coincidentally, the new director of the state's Veteran Affairs Office set up an appointment to come here on Thursday to meet with me. I think it's just an introductory thing, but he'll be here Thursday afternoon to meet with me. So I can, you know, mention this and bring this up and...
Has somebody typed it up?
What's our next step into...
This is why we put on as a...
I would suggest that we, about to start, we should give the Town Council to address this through the ordinance, because it's not in the charter. And because if you're gonna add that, and there might be an issue of just creating language, the position will be a liaison to the Veterans Council, so put together an ordinance.
Well, it's not a liaison to the Veterans Council, because the position wouldn't work for the Veterans Council.
What I'm saying is that if the language of the council wants to put that in there, or if that's something the council can do, because that's how the ordinance is gonna read. Now, if there needs to be, you know, dressing up of the language...
Right, okay.
But obviously qualifications, term of years, whatever standards that want to be set. And if there's anything in the state or any of the other communities that we can look at to do the same thing, so it doesn't, you know, run afoul of everyone else's.
What, they mostly have a two-year appointment?
Two-year appointment.
Well, that's why Fred and I had a meeting with Bob, because he was actually concerned...
I wish I was invited, but I couldn't make my own meeting.
So he was concerned because he thought that this was gonna take away from what they're doing at the American Legion, and it's not. It's to work in concert with them.
He misunderstood though.
Yes, he did. He did.
But I mean, out of courtesy, I should've been invited to that meeting.
Well, it was a last-second thing. It was during, at 1:00 in the afternoon. I know you can't get here.
I'm here all the time at 1:00. Don't matter. I made my own appointment with them.
My suggestion would be, if there's any member of the council that has an idea about what they want in the ordinance, just let me know as quickly as possible.
I think it should be a two-year term, like all the rest are.
I'd like to see... Well, Coventry doesn't have one, but let's look at some of these other communities that do have.
You didn't read, she sent us an email what they had on, who was that, Warwick?
Warwick. Warwick has the Warwick's Veterans Service Organization that they started, plus the Rhode Island Military Organization, Remo. Yes, Councilwoman Camille Bella Wilkinson. She's the veterans coordinator right now. But who's in charge of Remo is Tim Howe, H-O-W-E, so, Tim.
Now, what happens in Warwick if she's not on the council?
What do you mean, if she's not on what council?
She's on the Warwick City Council right now.
Correct, yeah.
Has War III, but also she has this position.
Right.
If she leaves the council, she's no longer in that position.
Sure she is.
That's what I'm asking.
Oh, yeah. One doesn't have anything to do with the other. Yeah, it's separate, so...
I wonder more than two years.
I didn't want to say it was a council position.
No, it's not. It was, they basically, yeah.
General sits on the board of the Seward Department as chairman. Now, is it something like that? Now, if he leaves as a councilman, he actually loses that position.
No, this is totally separate, so...
So there's gonna be a council appointment?
Correct.
You need to criteria. You need the appointment, the appointment of different, two years, three years, four years. That's what it would be, but by the end of the year, it's addressed with two-month qualifications standards and what the job's going to...
Well, must, they gotta be a veteran.
There you go.
Fred, can we get language?
It's not a complicated thing. This is a good thing and everybody's making it like it's a sin from hell.
I'm just trying, my only criteria is make it open, give everybody a shot at it, because I...
Listen, you got my back and whatever they want to do, I'm for it.
Fred, can we get language from other towns that have this position?
Well, I gave the last... I did. I provided it already from the other town, so...
We just want to make sure the council wants it as an ordinance, I'll work with them.
Yeah.
Then we'll put it together and we'll put something on...
Because this is gonna be here forever. I mean, so we're gonna make a, that's why we're gonna do an ordinance. And let's do it right the first time and that's it. It has nothing to do with the person that's standing before us.
No, absolutely. I just wanted, I just want to make sure it's created for the town.
And this is, no, this is, and I applaud you for that. Thank you.
I'm not here for, you know, patting on the back. I just, I want to make sure, as a veteran, I want to make sure that the veterans are taken care of.
I'll pat you on the back.
You'd probably kick me in the... I didn't say anything.
Thanks, Deb.
Can we have a discussion?
Thank you, Deb.
So just a couple of things. The pension board, at their last meeting, they did have the actuary do the presentation for the year on the pension fund. That report is on our website, the full document. And also, if you go up on our website and click on minutes and agendas, you can actually view the meeting itself and that presentation, because we did record it with the system here. So if anybody would like to see that, it's all available online. Just an update on the road bond, on the bid process. I was able to get a former, the former town engineer for Smithfield, who's a Warwick resident, came on board to assist us with getting all the documents together, because we don't have an engineer in-house. And so those bid documents are ready to go out and they're gonna be issued on Friday. The bids are due a week from, two weeks from Monday. Yeah, so April 4th.
Because they open up the plans.
Yep. So April 4th, and then we'll be able to, once we get the bids, the idea is to pick, you know, one hopefully that can do it all. It'll go fast after that. Sorry.
Go ahead. Is there any language in the RFP that says they have to perform the work by a certain date?
Yeah. Yeah, basically, we set up the parameters for the bond, because the bond has to be spent within 18 months of issuance. And so we have the date specific in the document saying these will be the working, you know, periods and all work... this, these will be the working, you know, periods, and all work must be completed by, essentially, it's like three weeks before the bond issuance ends, so that's all part of the document. And we went, I mean, this is a thick document, before we were putting out like one or two pages, this is a major road bond initiative, so we reviewed several other communities that have done this recently, and like I said, I brought in the registered PE to review and put our document together, and I think it's a very solid document now, and it's something that I'm confident in going out with and knowing that we're going to get our money's worth out of it. He's also available to assist us, once the projects get rolling, to, you know, check up on the inspectors and those types of things, so we'll be utilizing him in that capacity as well, because it's a position that we don't have right now.
We will be able to subtract or add streets.
Absolutely, and that's all part of it too. So we listed all the streets that were provided, but we also made it very clear that this is a starting point based upon the price, we've asked for price per street that we've given them, and we've also asked for actual prices per activity. So what's it going to cost to coal plane per square yard, what's it going to cost to repave, what's it going to cost to reclaim a road? So we're going to have all those prices, and we made it clear that the reason for asking for those is that we reserve the right to add or subtract streets from the list once we understand the pricing and, you know, what's possible, so. It's flexible, but at the same time, the trick with it was to get it as complete as possible so that everybody's bidding on the same thing, so it's a fair competitive bid. So, and that's what we've been working on to make sure that that was the fact. It's been a lot of work over the last couple of weeks, like I said, the document is quite voluminous at this point, but, but it's a, it's something we can stand behind and know that we're going to be protected, so.
One question for the manager. Myself and Councilwoman Drew were discussing in the parade route, a couple constituents, the skateboard park.
Yes.
This was supposed to have been done last year. I promised them, I got about six phone calls, that it will be done by April. So we can't stall this anymore.
Yep.
We let them park the buses there.
Understood.
Now our kids are suffering, they don't have the skateboard park, I don't want the aggravation, every week I get the calls, the skateboard park was supposed to be completed last year.
Yep, it was.
So whoever's in charge, we got to get it done before April, well, during April, it will be open.
Yep, it will be done.
Thank you.
Karen's in charge, Karen's in charge.
Karen, you're in charge.
It will be done.
Thank you.
Let's see, oh, just wanted to remind everybody, the West Warwick was one of the two communities chosen by PBS to do the Our Town series, so they'll actually be doing a documentary on the town, and they'll be interviewing residents, and they're going to have a meeting, kind of a kickoff meeting on Wednesday, the 23rd, at 5:30 at the senior center, and they really, they really want people to come and tell their story, and they'll be, from that initial meeting, they'll be going out and doing interviews and going around town and doing a lot of footage. It's a great opportunity, I think, to showcase, you know, positive, you know, aspects of the community, so it's, and we were...
Can we do it for Jay Messier?
Absolutely. He'll be there, I'm sure, right? Because I...
We have a thing at the school that same night.
Yeah, what's at school?
The Kid Science, uh...
That's right.
Things that I, I go every year, they do a great job, so I always supported them.
Yeah, they're awesome.
I might be a little, yeah.
You could do that too. And just to follow up, I know that it was asked at the last meeting regarding the fireworks sales at the Legion property crush, well, I did check in with the trust, they were...
Like we didn't know.
Yeah, they, they basically said they would really recommend against that, they can't stop us.
The Legion's insurance was against it all.
Yeah, I know, I spoke to them as well, so, just to follow up though, that's all I have.
Can you answer that?
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Sneaks on in, Drew.
Windmill update.
Everything is on track, the site's all ready, and essentially now we're just waiting for delivery, which is, we should be seeing the, the tower segments should be arriving later this month, and the turbines themselves will be arriving in early April, all into Quonset, and that'll be quite the show when they're, when they're driving down the, down the streets to get to their location, so...
How we are, how we are on schedule for June.
Yep, everything's on schedule, yes.
Good.
Can you let us know when that one starts, we get excited.
I will, absolutely.
Yeah, we would like to...
Yeah, it's only going to be two days to actually erect them, so once that's scheduled, we'll let everybody know.
Want to talk about our 50th, 50-year-old business in town?
Unless you want to save it for your ward report.
We don't have ward report.
Okay.
That's why we're all sneaking in yours tonight.
Okay, fair enough. Yeah, Garrus Clothing is, is going to be celebrating their 50th year this month, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And so...
April 1st and 2nd, I believe.
April 1st and 2nd, they're doing open house. So that's pretty impressive run, and it's been an institution here in Arctic. I think everybody's probably rented at least one or two tuxes from them over the years and purchased clothing there, and so it's, but if you have the opportunity to just stop by, if you haven't done it, it's, it's worth the price of admission just to go in there and...
Garrafanos are just wonderful people, and he's such a character.
They're great, yeah.
You know, if you've ever done business with him or met him before, he's quite a character.
Quite a sense of humor and never cracks a smile, it's great.
No, no, he's got a, he's got an interesting sense of humor, but 50 years is, is great.
Amazing, yeah.
50 years is great, and so I'd like the town to recognize that, and I'm sure we'll do a...
Yeah, so we'll put together a...
Our next meeting is actually...
Proclamation for the next meeting?
First forest, right? Yeah, yeah, okay.
That'll be right after, that'll be...
Yeah, that'll be the 5th, that'll be on the 5th, yeah.
Good, so we'll do something, we'll put something together. And Fred, how about the solar panels?
Solar panels, they're, as I mentioned before, we've, when we did the roofs, we felt that by removing all that weight, it was the old gravel and tar roof, we took a ton of weight off of that, multiple tons of weight off of that, those two structures, and what we're putting back up there with solar panels is actually much less in the weight than what was on there. But because the original building plans were not in existence in the town hall, we searched high and low trying to find the original building plans for that. We found subsequent plans, but not the original engineering design specs, which were required by the solar company. And without them, their engineers required that we reinforce the steel girders to ensure that the weight won't be a problem, which we've had to concede to do. In that process, we've also found that the, of course, the girders, because it was a 1970's building, girders had lead paint that had to be abated, and there was also asbestos on some of the lower sections that had to be abated as required by the state. So that's all been done, with the exception of the steelwork reinforcement is ongoing right now. They'll be wrapping up in the fieldhouse in the next week or so, moving over to the ice rink to do that work. They've already done the abatement work, but they'll have to do the steelwork, they'll be moving over. And it's been a challenge because they've been doing it outside of the busy hours, we haven't shut down, so they work, and when the abatement was going on, they worked, they had to clean the whole place, and then they had to get out of there before scheduled times. We had to move some schedules around, but people have been cooperative and it's been difficult. But the goal is, and the schedule is, that the, the solar panels will be on the buildings by the end of June, no later than. So we'll have windmills in, solar, by the end of June.
How about the LED lights, streetlights?
The LED lights, we're meeting with the, with Prism later this week, and right now we're waiting for National Grid to basically approve the sale. We submitted the request to them over 120 days ago. They have 60 days to respond, just to give you an idea of...
Like the President's streetlight call.
The wait time, so, but for Providence, for their response to Providence, it was, it was over 120 days, so we should be hearing from them soon, and once we get that, we'll be on target to get those moving in the spring as well.
And it's very appropriate that we just talked about three green items.
Yeah.
Having St. Patrick's Day this week.
Nice segue.
Fred, I know Dave's not here tonight, but Jared Nunes is going to go down to Phoenix tomorrow and remove that stump, he's using the excavator with wheels, so it doesn't tear up anything, sidewalk. The town has nothing, he offered, a couple weeks ago, the town really has nothing strong enough to pull that stump, and there's no sense of destroying operating that. So Jared actually volunteered, we just heard conversations, he said, listen, if you want me to do it, I'll do it. So tomorrow, he's going down and doing it. Dave was invited just to make sure the electricity was shut off, that goes over to the old tree, and also if we could supply, Jared's going to text me what time he's going to be down at, if we could just supply a dump truck so he can put the stump in and we can dispose of it.
It's going to be a big stump.
You don't know what time it is.
I don't know what time, they text me early in the morning.
What it is though, that might, that might be...
Also, I understand, and anybody who knows Mr. Combs, I know we talked about it a couple weeks ago, he's still willing to donate the Christmas tree that he has in the front of his house, and we were just talking about it, and he says his granddaughter gave him a tough time because he planted that when she was about three months old, and, you know, and so it's going to be coming from his front yard, they're going to transport it over to Phoenix, and hopefully we'll have a new tree by end of April. And again, I want to thank, and we will, we'll put a big thank you, the Phoenix Square Diner has asked me to make sure I keep track of everybody who's done something, so they can put, especially the next tree lady, they can thank everybody and everybody who's involved in getting this done. And, you know, Kevin, thank you, you know, Jared Nunes and anybody else, you know, Michael's Tree Service, I mean, it's amazing on how many people, and I'm still working with the West Warwick firefighter, on, he's got a connection with a mill who's going to take that log and convert it into a bench or benches. So we're still working on that, so that's still in the works, and we're also looking at a couple other things down there in honor of our friend Cora.
So it takes a village to cut a tree down, and to plant a tree.
I got to say, I can't believe other people have really gotten involved in that, sure. Anything else for Fred?
Hello again. I just wanted to actually update the council on a couple of things with the budget workshops coming up next week, but before I talk about that briefly, I just want to mention that Fred and I have been working with the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank, continuing with the applications for both building efficiency and the renewable energy, we're waiting for some answers, we may be able to get financing, as Fred has mentioned in his previous reports, for at least one of the wind turbines, and also possibly for something with the streetlights, where we can actually get a rate better than what we would get on our own, through the infrastructure banks, and there'll be more information coming within the next, next couple of weeks, as soon as we hear anything from them. Part of that will require some audences for the approval, because it will be an issuance of a general obligation bond, but again, we will provide that in plenty of time to be able to meet the deadlines that they have. So, that was just a quick update on that. I just want to mention a couple of things that'll be different with the workshops or with the budget documents this year. I had some conversations with the council president. What we had mentioned last year was actually coming up with a personnel supplement. We did not do it last year for a lot of different reasons, but this year we actually will be including that in the document, both in the public document as well as with the council, where we'll actually have a listing by position of what the salary, wages, benefits, and all the different components, so you can get a true picture of what the cost is of the positions, both the individual positions, the total with the department, as well as a total for the entire, for the entire town. We have a summary document that I prepared for the departments, so you can actually see total salaries, total longevity, total pension benefits, and different things like that.
John, I had asked Fred if we could put that, import that into Granicus, so that we could actually highlight items and, you know...
Okay.
Put our comments live on there and then save it?
Now that you've approved the workshops, we'll upload it on there, so you'll be able to access those workshops.
Use the tool that Granicus has provided for us, great.
Yeah, that is, that is part of the plan, in addition to that, I also am going to have the binder documents like you've previously received, where you can actually, you know, make your different notes that you may want to add and so forth, and I'll have more information in that document for the council as well, as we discussed previously when it came to some of the breakdowns of some of the individual expenditures versus just, you know, getting a total. I know they referred, in some cases, they referred to as justification sheets. I've tried to cut that and narrow that process down, so there's not as much paper, but also giving you the information that you need, you know, so you'll know what the individual items will be. But the biggest, the biggest change with the personnel supplement is, Fred and I have had discussions, and I did talk to the council president as well, when it comes to the pension benefits or the pension cost, what we're looking to do is, and again, this is at the council's discretion, if you decide you want to go with what we have in the, in the budget document, but what we were looking to do is have what we call the normal cost, or the portion that's not underfunded within the department, so we get into a departmental expense, so to speak, but in talking with Fred, we feel that it doesn't, the department shouldn't bear the burden of the unfunded portion, because that would blow the budgets out tremendously because of such, such the value associated with that underfunded portion. So what you will see in the document, once we discuss it next week, is the, what we refer to as a normal cost by municipal, police, fire, because there is a normal cost associated, which is a much reduced percentage of the payroll, versus, you know, the unfunded drives it to 50, 60, 70% of your payroll. So what we're going to do is have a departmental cost that will be the normal cost, or a little bit easier to swallow, so to speak, for the departments, and the unfunded portion will be, will remain in the general government. A lot of the benefits that were in general government before, like the payroll taxes, deferred compensation when it came to non-union employees, as well as the medical cost, used to be in general government, again, we're putting that into the supplement and putting that into the department. And this will make all more sense once you actually see it, but I just wanted to mention it now, so if you have any questions over the next couple of days, or obviously once you see it in the budget document next week, you can, you know, feel free to, you know, to mention it to me, but I just wanted to kind of just put it out there for, food for thought. But what we really want to do is actually get to the point where we're getting a true cost of the departments, which is why we're looking to shift those benefits over. But as part of it, and in order for both the council and the public to be able to understand, and compare it to previous years, I do have a summary document that will summarize it all, where there can be comparisons to previous years.
This is, this is great, like, because I remember when I first got on the council, I was looking through a lot of the budget documents, and I had no clue what I was looking at. I didn't know how many employees you had in finance, I didn't know what the different job descriptions were, and I think that this is going to make it a lot more intuitive and a lot more easy to understand for any resident that just picks up this document or downloads the PDF, they get to see what's going on at town hall and who the people are, and I like that you separated for the pension stuff, the normal cost and the unfunded cost, because it shows what it actually costs, and then it separates the problem that we have, that we're working to solve, but it, it takes that out, so it doesn't look like...
And a lot of that is going, was, you know, was a product of now having an HR payroll system, which went live in January, that actually will help us to track that, so there's not as much legwork going into it. So we can actually get a, get a report from the system, broken down by those various categories, and charge, charge them off on a weekly basis, you know, so it's really going to make things a lot more better for a report presentation, and be able, for me to provide the council with, whether it's quarterly or monthly, better financial statement updates on, you know, the position of, of the town. On that note, the budget document next week will include totals through the end of February, and I do plan to update the council in April with a quarter, another quarterly report similar to what I had done back in December. So, that's basically in a nutshell, any questions now or over the next couple of days, feel free to let me know.
Thanks.
Friday, 1:30, town hall, all the employees, all the town hall workers, police, fire, public, the Sunday of Italy, Vince Lombardi Lodge, which I am president, we're having a St. Joseph's Day, because St. Joseph's Day is Saturday, we're having it Friday, we'll have zapeless, the J.C.'s donate coffee and light refreshments, so everyone's well everyone's welcome, 1:30, right here. Thank you.
And I've got a couple of things, I'll make it short though, as short as I can. Uh, first of all, I want to, uh, thank very much, uh, Representative Nunes, uh, for his, uh, his help on, on the, the tree in Phoenix Square and all the things that he's, he's done for this town. Uh, he's always stepped up to the plate, I appreciate it. He's going to be helping me on the, uh, the new factory, uh, street playground. Uh, and also, uh, the second thing is, I, um, I want to give you a, uh, a little story about how municipalities and, uh, agencies, state agencies can work together and put their heads together and come to a, uh, a, a good conclusion. I had a, a couple of constituents, uh, from Robert Street Manor call me up, Route 13, the bus route, it's one-way street, uh, one day they just decided to get rid of it and rip up the, uh, the shelter. So, uh, the people were pretty upset about it, they knew it was going to happen, uh, until it was too late. So, um, uh, I, I called, the only one that I knew that might have some kind of influence to get a quick meeting with Ripta, and that's Mayor Aphidesian. So, I, I called Scott and I, I said, I told him what happened, I said, I need a meeting, whether, you know, you put it back or not, I need something quick, uh, because they've already ripped out the thing. Uh, again, no public hearing that I know of that we could find. So, uh, I called Rep. Nunes also, having a little clout at the, uh, up at the hill, uh, see if he could, uh, get involved in this and he did, he thought it was outrageous.